I bet everybody heard me anyway. Maybe the camera didn't hear me. I'm calling a meeting in order for the public hearing for the tax rate for this year. And good news, the tax rate went down. Yay, barely. Do we have a written statement to make for that? Should I read through that? It's in here someplace, isn't it?
Yeah.
I'll find it. This right there? Shall I, should I read through this? No, this is, this is for the meeting. Okay, I'll just read the information about the tax rate. Current property tax rate is 0.412 cents per $100 assessed value. This year's proposed tax rate is .390 per $100 assessed value. This results in a 5.34% decrease to the tax rate and a 4% projected increase in revenue. The city's current adopted budget assumes a 4% increase in property tax revenue. The proposed tax rate provides approximately $198,130 in additional revenue over the amount generated using the, using compensating tax rate. The average single-family home value in Fort Thomas increased from $215,830 last year to $236,997 this year as calculated from the city's tax rolls. A new tax rate would actually decrease the taxes on a home valued at $236,997 by $52.14 from $976.43 to $924.29. That tells the whole thing. So would anyone like to address council about the tax rate? Just the tax rate? No other, like, facilities or anything? Sorry. All right. So what else should we talk about?
I'd still like to suggest a compromise on this rate, but my feeling is we, year after year after year, get the 4% max and I'd kind of like to cut the citizen to break at some point and have some kind of compromise that didn't seek the full 4% revenue increase. That's just my two cents. I know it's a little late in the game to go there.
Yeah, we, we could, if we wanted to address that, we'd have to address it during the budgeting process, which obviously could be done at some point in the future. And I think what we've always looked at is the, the long-term effect of not taking the full 4% compensating rate, what it does to the city. And since the city is mainly residential and there's not a lot of commercial, it's difficult to not take the compensating rate with the effects of, and I think the two big things, and we've chatted about this before, the two big things, the two big unknowns are health insurance costs and the pension costs. And I know Ron's got something on the agenda for the meeting that hopefully might deal a little bit with the healthcare cost. That might be beneficial. And I'd, I'll be right there with you, Ken, if those costs, if those two costs, if we get some kind of handle on them at some point in the future that we could forecast five and 10 years out and say, this is what we know pension's going to cost and this is what healthcare costs, then we can sit back and say, okay, we did a 10-year budget and we can budget the tax increases appropriately. And yeah, I, that would be fun. That would be real fun.
I'd like to add to the, with regard to the pension, it is still a legislative agenda item for KLC to push for separation. We talked about that in the last session and it got dismissed and the governor kind of had his way with getting everything under one umbrella. Obviously, the pension issue hasn't gone away. However, for our purposes, being a municipality and certainly, you know, looking at the two pension systems side by side, there's still a lot of benefit to us from having the separation for CRS, so we'll continue to support that. We'll be talking with our legislators and we would advise everyone else to do the same. In the best interest of our city, a separation bill would be the best way to go. So that will be an item in the upcoming session. So that might help stabilize it as well. And as the mayor indicated, those are really two, two of the biggest issues is the CRS. And Joe can speak to the, I mean, even, even, even though it was addressed this last time, we had a significant increase and it impacted our budget.
The 12% increase, that's the maximum amount allowed under the phase and equates to about $180,000 a year for us. So it eats up the majority of the 4% tax increase already. The 4% tax increase, I think this year's approximately $210,000, $214,000.
I think it's $290. something, isn't it? The, I mean, the revenue increase that we're going to be seeing?
198, 130 in additional revenue over the amount generated using compensating rate.
Over the compensating rate, correct. The increase over last year's about $215,000, over last year's projected amount, which is mostly eaten up by a $180,000 pension increase, which we can, which we can expect next year as well.
So hopefully, the, the resulting efforts at Frankford will address, you know, the, the plan itself as far as the CRS and then the cost would be affected by the separation. It would allow counties and cities to be segregated and have an opportunity to be self-funded, if you will. And it's a much better standing than the rest of the pension systems in the state. So if we knew that was under control, that would be very beneficial also for planning.
Hey, Ron, I think last year you prepared a ranking of neighboring communities' effective tax rates versus Fort Thomas. Joe, do you or Ron have any?
We don't have the 2018 rates yet. Actually, Triad's website is actually fairly up to date with 2017 rates. So you can actually go out there and look at that. Now, obviously, that's to speak to us, that still has our rate at last year's 412, but, or in everybody's rates at where they were sitting last year. But Triads are fairly up to date. Once we get, once everybody passes their 2018s, I know we may never last year to, to get what those rates look like, I mean, between Ron, myself, and the list, so we can get a, we can get a list of all the comparables in the, in our neck of the woods.
Yeah, I think that'll work.
Yeah.
And, you know, for comparison's sake, it's always apples to apples. That's, that's the, the tax rate, but for other municipalities, sometimes they have different revenues for it that we don't, we don't see. So that's always something to consider as well.
And that was my, that was my comment about mainly residential, we don't have a lot of business income that could offset that, so that puts us in a little bit of a predicament. A couple of folks walked in in the middle, we're in the middle of a public hearing on the tax rate for 2018, if anybody would like to address council about the 2018 tax rate?
Property tax.
Property tax rate. Anybody else on council have any comments or questions or anything like that? If not, I will close the public hearing for the tax rate. Yeah, that was easy. Oh, I need an easy button. I've got a Yahoo button at home, I could bring that. Maybe I'll do that. And then we will wait six minutes for the next meeting to start. Don't talk amongst yourselves. We can talk amongst ourselves, too.
That's dress door, dress door, entryway, that's going to be a dorm room, everything. Nine foot tall ceiling, basement. You enter from that side. And that's the new routine. Also, that's all going to be driveway, a lot of concrete. Ultimate parking area. So it's 25 by 21.
That's a big room.
So that's all getting back filled and that'll be on concrete.
It's a serious project, though.
It's a, yeah, it keeps getting more serious by the day.
Sure.
It's just like, oh, yeah, I guess we do need a walkway to that. Anyway, it's, it's pretty. Yeah, that's what I'll see in the basement, first ceiling in the basement. That's just raw storage area, it's going to have HVAC.
It is going to be like, how you do like a separate system?
Yeah, it'll have, we're doing mini splits, those ones that mount on the side, the little hachi things. Mitsubishi makes them.
Yeah, so I go to Japan a lot, I know Japan has, all they have is.
Yeah.
We did think of a garage. Just the foundation.
Are you going to have a constant temperature or only are you going to go off there?
I'll probably have like a maintenance temperature, I'll never like freeze your bag.
But you never?
But I, no, I'll have it at 85 in the summer. I'm not going to.
You see it?
But I do want a dry environment for vehicles and stuff in storage.
Yeah, I think that's good, get those max, those maxes ready and stuff. Go wrong, these whole things.
Yeah. That's how it relates to the house. And I've already got an existing single car garage under that bedroom. Anyway, it's going to be a really nice addition. Got to get some vehicles to put in.
I saw this one year, yeah.
I've got my 2001 Dodge van I get to keep. I sold it, sold the shop and they didn't need the van.
Oh, really? So you're going to keep that?
I bought it brand new and every month, it's only got 54,000 in it. That's one of those maxi vans, just big long ones.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I'll keep it. It's handy. If I start playing music again or something, I'll just bang it. Somebody getting fenders?
I was wondering.
Michael Wright's.
I haven't seen him.
Fire, fire paramedic. That's just as I get older, it's not a guy.
Maybe ask about the next one.
Yeah. That's a hell of a mix. Yeah. That's a hell of a mix.
On, from our community?
Yeah, I can see that. I mean, sure. Is that the grand painting? Yeah, it's a lot of, a lot of, or if it's good, if they, it's a pretty professional thing. So that means Grayan will have to have his own people. Six acts coming along. What am I pulling? I don't think, it's probably not totally unreasonable for.
But usually, it, it all gets, we'll see, the sound guy is going to be backstage audio, I think, his company is going to give the, you know, they do the whole production, but I guess they're not going to mess with the loading and loading of equipment. That's a lot. What are we doing?
All right, welcome, everybody. First thing on the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Is there a second? We'll call vote, please.
Mr. Hamer.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
All right, this is the point of the meeting for you all, visitors and communications. If anybody would like to address council on any topic, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address and what your topic is.
Hello. My name is Kelly Canales and I live at 167 Clover Ridge Avenue in Fort Thomas. I'm actually just wanting to see if I could get some help from the city because I purchased a house in 2016, June of 2016, and about a month and a half later, if everybody in Fort Thomas remembers, there was a pretty bad flood in July, about a month and a half later. And I went through SD1 to talk to them about the flooding issues on the street because that particular day, I actually ended up getting about five feet of water in my driveway and about two feet of water into my house. Unfortunately, I wasn't the only person who was affected by that, but, but as time has gone on for several years now, I've noticed that there's, continues to be some water issues coming down the sideways, sidewalk. So I contacted SD1 and they said it was a city issue and I'm just asking for some help to look into, like redoing my sidewalk so the water from Clover Ridge, whether you're coming down the hill or up the hill, doesn't flow into there. And I've contacted, I cannot remember his name, Kevin, I apologize, I don't remember his last name. Yes. Yes. I contacted him and he said he'd look into it, I hadn't heard back, and then I was told to contact Ron Dill, in which I have a couple of emails back and forth from him and he did not, I asked him kind of what was happening and nobody would respond to me or help me with the issue, whether somebody was going to help me or not help me. So I'm just asking for help.
Are you near the bottom of the slope where it kind of flattens out?
Yes.
Okay, because we did have some serious problems there a few years ago, a few years ago. It might have been 10 years. Okay, Ron, do you have information on that? Because I know we've got problems there and see what we can do.
Yeah, actually, we did speak a couple of times and then I had indicated that we had a study that we had done and I, I asked for archives for that because our engineer was involved in that process. And then I, I emailed you to let you know that I did have that information. But it, it goes back and dates back to 2003 is when that study was done.
Just a few years ago.
Yeah, I think I was a kid.
And at that time, there were drainage calculations done. The city did invest about $30,000 in upgrades to the system based on our engineer's report. At the time, and if you drive the street, you'll see there's actually two double inlets. You're situated kind of at the lowest point. I think at the time that the contact was made, 2003, it was actually from the property owner where you live.
Okay.
Ms. Christofield.
Yes.
Was the owner at the time. And those repairs were made to address items within the right of way. So I, you know, we haven't had anybody look at it recently. That's dated to 2003, was based off of, you know, engineering standards at the time. I mean, we could certainly revisit that. Additionally, maybe your timing is good, because I did report to council at the last meeting or two, two meetings ago, I think it was the August meeting. SD1 has a new program where they do participate when it involves private property as well and it's a one-third participation if the city's involved with the project. And if you recall, I mentioned that I had a project that fit that, that we are currently working. In fact, we met with them today on their situation and there's some possibility that it could address that issue. And if you recall, we, when we talked, I'm assuming there was a disclosure when you purchased the property because clearly it was an issue at least that long ago.
Yeah, unfortunately, the property owner did not disclose that. They did say that there was water that would come in from the street when it would rain hard, but there was never any major issues. However, what I learned after that is they specifically bricked up the garage so it didn't seep into the, that lower level, but I'm still having problems and issues with it flowing. But SD1 told me that they couldn't help me because it's not, the water's not coming from the street, it's coming from the sidewalk, so it's a city issue.
Yeah. And again, we, we kind of addressed the issues in the right of way, but I do think under this new program, there's some potential that it could be looked at from that perspective.
Do you know what the remedy might be if it's on the sidewalk? I mean, how, you're not going to put grates on the sidewalk, what would the remedy be?
Well, I mean, you could do, you could do grates in a sidewalk. You just have to be careful about trip hazards and, and the type of grading that would be in place over the top of it because of, you know, foot traffic.
I've never seen that anywhere where there's actually an inlet upon a sidewalk.
Well, it's not an inlet, it's, it's actually like a trench drain that crosses a sidewalk.
I believe there's one on North Fort Thomas Avenue, right near Tower Hill or something. There is one on the sidewalk.
We've installed those before, so if it's a sidewalk issue, the trench drain would work with that. But, you know, the, again, just reading the file, there's significant amounts of water that come from a lot of different locations. This particular property and the neighboring property are the lowest point and it comes from a lot of area around, you know, that, that area of, of collection, if you will, is, is pretty broad based and it all ends up in that yard area, not just at that low point in the street, but also in the yard area. But we could certainly arrange to come out and look at it from the perspective of that program with SD1. We're working with one other property owner and, you know, I, I have vague memory of that, I was here in 2003, but it has been a while. I'm familiar with the property, I recall the project, but not all the particulars about, you know, what other issues were involved other than addressing them at the catch basis. We could look at that again.
So you have her contact information and?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you for using.
Would anyone else like to address council?
Good evening, everyone. How are you? My name is Jimmy Gella, One Trevilla Court, Fort Thomas, Kentucky. So I'm here today to make a request or to give some background as well. I do have handouts, is it, is it okay to pass these out? Sure. Okay. I'm sorry if I don't have enough. I have nine. So once again, my name is Jimmy Gella, I am the HOA president of the Villa Grande Community in Fort Thomas. I'm not sure if everyone is aware of the community in, within the handouts. I do have a map in there to show where we are located. We are located in the northwest corner of, of the city, close to 471, joins, close to Wood Lawn. So we're here today, there are some residents of the community here as well, to respectfully ask for consideration into adding some sidewalks outside of our community. We are a fairly new community and we are comprised of 106 families, three different streets, all within the city of Fort Thomas. And unfortunately, we, we have very little access to the rest of the community. And we, like everyone else within Fort Thomas, very proud to be part of the city, but being that separation, that lack of connectivity has, has hindered us a little bit. I know, I believe it has been considered and talked about, so really, I'm here today not, not to ask anything other than, can you please consider the addition of sidewalks? And what you see within the map, if you have not, if you're not familiar, picture one is the, just the, the map of where the city is, of where our neighborhood is located. Picture two shows the entrance of Villa Grande, which is starred. The closest sidewalk is Kyle's Lane, begins at Kyle's Lane off of Chesapeake, which is about .2 miles away from the entrance to that. So if sidewalks were to be added, it would be .2 miles worth of sidewalk. Picture three shows going to the west towards Newport, also .2 miles. That connects to a, it's hard to call it a, a sidewalk, it's more of a parking pad. Those that have been through Chesapeake may be familiar with that, a little bit wider than, than a sidewalk, but there are cars that park there. That is also, like I said, in the city of Newport, so isn't, isn't Fort Thomas's responsibility, but it gives us something to connect to, that, that road is, is pretty unsafe to walk or bike, but if we could get there, at least we have somewhere to walk. Picture four just shows an up-close image of the border between Fort Thomas and Newport and that parking pad that is there. So once again, excuse me, is, is simply to ask, have discussions been had? And if, if so, if not, please consider it so that we can adequately, you know, safely walk to other parts of, of the city.
Absolutely. Thank you. You got some background in this information?
Well, yes, I can share in our updated comprehensive plan, there, there's been, well, we have a, an entire committee, I don't know if you're familiar with the update process?
Yes, yes.
That is dedicated to transportation and connectivity. So they, they spend quite a bit of time talking about sidewalk and extending sidewalk into areas in the community where they're not already present, and there's a number of those.
Right.
And there's actually, I think, four longer runs that have been specifically identified, including the one that you're referring to, as priority locations. And then the only thing I would add is, you know, for this council, we've had that longstanding policy where we really look at those when we are able to match those with outside funding. And we're presently doing a project on North Fort Thomas Avenue.
Yes, yes.
That's very similar to where, what you described.
Right, right.
And I think we would pursue that and that's part of the strategy base that'll come out of the comprehensive plan. So it's certainly on the radar that way.
Yeah, I appreciate that, certainly appreciate that. You know, if there's anything that we can do as a community to help with that, to help support that, please let us know. You know, my intent today was not to come in and say, I need funding or we need funding, it was just to make sure it was on the radar, to, to let you know that we're, we're supportive of it and anything that we can do to, to help, please let us know. Because.
There are occasionally, there are funding opportunities that come up.
Sure, right.
And when they do, when we get in that process, we can certainly contact you and say, if you all could have letters or do something that supports it, that, that certainly helps.
Yes, absolutely. Let us know what we can do.
Sure.
The, the 106 families in the community are very, very excited to have this, so whatever we can do to help, please let us know.
Sure, I can tell you, I serve on that committee, transportation and connectivity, and I know we've advocated for that to be added to the plan, so.
Yep.
The, our conclusion was from that committee that, yeah, that should have a sidewalk.
Great, glad to hear it.
So we'll see when it can materialize.
Got it. And so I understand correctly, you, that there's like .2 miles in Newport that needs sidewalk, too?
Mr. Mayor, the, not necessarily, to the southeast, picture two, that's .2 miles, the other, so it's total .2 miles all within Fort Thomas. The, the .2 miles to the west, which is picture three, that is, to my understanding, within the city of Fort Thomas, it would connect to the parking pad that is in Newport.
Okay, so that's still Fort Thomas as well.
That is still Fort Thomas.
And there is no sidewalk going south, going south?
Towards the pavilion, correct. So if we wanted to walk to Kroger, walk to Target, walk to?
You have to walk in the street.
You have to walk in the street until you get to Newport, which is where the parking pad is, and then you can walk along the parking pad or bike. So it is both ways. Of course, the, the picture three going to Newport connects us to Newport, but, but still, if, if the intent is connectivity, both would be appreciative. I think the priority, and I listed these in priority order, would be to Fort Thomas, which is the .2, to Kyle's Lane. Second priority would be the other, if we can get it all at the same time, phenomenal.
It's, it's about 2,000 feet total and Villa Grande is kind of really equidistant.
Yeah, right.
In terms of the location in Fort Thomas.
Sure.
And there's about 750 feet in Newport that would have to be constructed to get connected within the city of Newport. So, you know, we could do joint application as well, which is another possibility.
And sometimes that works better. For us to do joint application with Newport, we might actually get better results.
Got it.
They like to see cooperation.
Sure, I'm sure they do.
On jurisdiction, so.
I'm sure they do.
We can certainly look at that. Okay, great.
I had a quick follow-up question.
Sure.
How does the city identify funding opportunities for the sidewalks?
Well, you know, any, any grant opportunities, we stay looped into any of those cycles. So it's really, you know, at the will of council, if, if we have an opportunity to make that, we typically will request council to approve that because it, it also involves us providing a match in, in all those instances. So we would do it in committee.
We can certainly look at that. Okay. Great.
I had a quick follow-up question. How does the city identify opportunities for the sidewalks?
Well, you know, any, any grant opportunities, we stay looped into any of those cycles. So it's really, you know, at the will of council. If, if we have an opportunity to make that, we typically will request council to approve that because it, it also involves us providing a match in, in all those instances. So we would do it in committee, perhaps budget for it in our public works.
Are they going to bring federal programs?
Yes.
And are they active in certain areas that they're now?
Yeah, they're cycled sometimes. I mean, they're usually available in like two-year cycles maybe. Rob, you help me out here. I see you, in a, in a two-year cycle. Yeah.
And how do you, how do you work on that?
Oh, we're, we're on lists. So we get updated on, on.
Inundated with email.
Yeah. So we're, we're on a mailing list or an email list. So when they become available, we become aware of them. Yeah. So we would report that through committee with Public Works Committee.
And Jack Morland at South Bank is always looking for opportunities to try to help Fort Thomas. So when he sees one, he contacts us right away.
He does. Great. Any other questions? Anything else?
Excellent.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Would anyone else like to address council?
If not, we'll move ahead with our agenda. We will go to reports of officers, fire department monthly report. Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. Boss and members of the board council, we're looking at coming down to the monthly reports that are mailed out in the packets. We'll be at the end to field any questions in mind down in the garden. But also want to let you know that we are ready. We've geared up for emergency uses. The command post will look a little different this time rather than the trailer. We'll get what they call Command 100 from the Forest Fire Police Department to utilize as our command post. It's basically like a big grayhound bus. So it'll be nice. I think we can fire all the work that's in the command. So we'll get that in there on Thursday as well. The MCU will get the new Dr. Crailer in there on Thursday. Get all set up. We're working on, I'll get my mailbox to see if we can pull up our contact list. We will work on our incident action plan. So all those things are going on. We're getting geared up for Saturday. We're going through the municipal and tower part. But again, basically, I don't know if you have any day after the month of it. If you have any questions you might have in the garden or anything else in the garden or fire department.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Any questions? I entertain a motion.
Move to receive and file.
Second. Roll call please.
Mr. Cameron?
Hi.
Mr. Bowman?
Hi.
Ms. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Beesel?
Hi.
Mr. Peterman?
Hi.
All right. Police Department monthly report. Chief Kilgore.
Mr. Mayor, I just had to provide a few comments there. We did back-to-school safety drills the last two weeks of August. We've also had schools, fire coordinator, life analytics. Everything's been doing very well in transit and school block services.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. Any questions for the chief?
Chief Kilgore, any empty-headed school resource officer position? How that's working out with the schools?
Yes, sir. Officer Rolf started about one week before first day of school. He's been doing great as expected. He is running all seven schools. He's a, he's a principal and got out what their wants and needs are. We handle those issues as they arise. We deal with their systems as they grow and improve as well.
I heard he failed his first math test in math classes.
He's got a laptop like twice the size of him must have.
Oh, okay. So he's good. Yeah, he's good.
He's all flipped up and buried in his trunk.
That's awesome. Awesome. Any other questions for the chief? I entertain a motion. Move to receive and file.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Cameron?
Hi.
Mr. Bowman?
Hi.
Ms. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Beesel?
Hi.
Mr. Peterman?
Hi.
Mr. Slaughter?
Hi.
All right. City administrators report.
Yes. Well, the first item I'd like to report on is Mayor Haas and I are working with our fire department staff, developing a chaplain program. We're excited to, to make this a possibility in addition to the fire department. The chaplain program, I'd, I submitted a copy that would be in the procedure manual for our fire department that outlines kind of what this position is and how it functions. Essentially, a volunteer position. It's designed to support our first responders. We have instances, unfortunately, where we have occasions where they're involved with traumatic situations and, and have, have to deal with those on a professional level and a personal level. So we're hopeful that, you know, having this resource is, you know, something available to them in those circumstances to help support them in those situations. So we've drafted the proper procedural insert that would go into their policy and procedures manual. We have an individual who was identified as a perfect candidate and you were circulated information on his background. Should be a familiar face to some of you. He is to me, but we're really excited to have Ken Clift, with the mayor's blessing, being appointed to serve as the first chaplain for the Fort Thomas Fire Department. So I know Ken's in the audience. If you could stand and be recognized for those that don't know you. And feel welcome to, to come in and, and talk about yourself.
Did you say 15 minutes worth? Is that what you said, Ken?
No, I said 15. Did I say seconds? I think I did. Yeah. It's, it's great to be, it's great to be back home. It's been 25 years, basically, since I retired.
Wow.
And it's been 15, yeah, long time, Eric.
Yeah.
And it's been 15 years of one of the best times of my life here as a firefighter medic. And it's great to be able to serve in this capacity. I always told everybody God had a strange sense of humor with me going into ministry. And this has happened to come along too. So thank you, Ron and Eric and the council for letting me do this. And especially Mark and my supporters back there. They all paid. I paid them all off. But appreciate the support, 100% support that the fire department's given me. Thank you very much for this opportunity. And it's glad to be back here to serve in that capacity again.
Thank you so much for volunteering to do this. This is absolutely great. Let's welcome him to the city.
Does it? No.
Just the, no, it does not actually. Yeah.
That's one of the, the perks I get as mayor. I get to do stuff like this. And I like this perk. That's good.
Okay. I just had a couple of other items for update. We referenced the visioning community plan. We have an important meeting coming up next Wednesday. It's actually a special meeting with the planning commission. So it'll be a public hearing for consideration of goals and objectives, which were developed out of each one of the committees. So those have been forwarded, compiled, they'll, they'll serve as kind of the, the core of, of our community plan, our updated comprehensive plan, if you will. So that public hearing is next Wednesday at 6:30. Immediately following that meeting, the planning commission will be doing a roundtable with our consultants and they will be exposed in some depth to the entire document in its draft form. Council will also receive copies of that. That meeting will be for the planning commission members to really interact with our consulting team. It's, it's a public meeting, but it's not a public hearing because it is the draft form. Based on where and how far they get, if they have to have a subsequent meeting to, to kind of get through the entire document, that'll be scheduled as a public meet, or a special meeting as well. Or it could be deferred to their regular meeting in October for continued discussion. And then subsequent to that, they'll have a public hearing and we would intend to do that at the mess hall, not unlike we've done with the other public meetings for that project. So stay tuned for those dates, but the, the first date is, is next Wednesday. And that public hearing's at 6:30. Couple of other items, the low labor license committee meeting regarding kind of our review of making notices and communications to our public. Ironically, we had a group approach us that is a graduate studies group from NKU. And they were looking, they're, it's the NKU executive leadership and organizational change class this semester, looking for projects. So I met with that group and we looked at a number of items surrounding kind of our community plan and other things that are going on in the city. And they actually centered in on that topic. It's a semester-long study for them that they're already engaged in. But in short, they act as a consulting team. That's their class project. Work with an agency or a municipality or local government and they take on a project and act as a consultant. So they do background, they do study, they do research, they create findings and, and make some recommendations. They have to report to their professor in front of their client. So myself and the mayor would be present. And then they could also participate in, in some presentation to a group. So where we were headed with that is, you know, they could certainly do a lot of the legwork for us.
Is there a stated objective for that? I mean, of transparency and public awareness?
Yes, yes. They signed, they, they are developing a contractual memorandum of understanding that would outline exactly what their end target is. And, and we've worked with them on that. They've already met with our staff and myself. But it, it actually is a great opportunity. It will not put us off of any timeframe. Their reporting date is October 21st. So we could do presentation or do a, a meeting with our low labor license sometime, either at our November meeting or if we wanted to have a special meeting to do that, we could. But I think it's, it's very much on target. It's a great opportunity to work with a student group. Obviously, they'll make findings. We, we will, at a staff level, be doing the same, similar type of work and, and do comparative notes with them. So that's kind of our intention moving forward. I think it's a great opportunity for us to interact with.
I'm very excited about this because I think the opportunity for, you know, graduate students who know all about the new technology on how we can get disseminated information, I think it's going to be a real benefit for us to be able to have them look at how we get that information out there. So I'm excited about that opportunity.
So we'll be moving forward in that direction. A couple of other items, Alexander Circle project, of course, is moving forward. One component of that development agreement was the arrangement, we have been working with the water district to have the main replaced from North Fort Thom, South Fort Thomas Avenue, excuse me, all the way into the project area. And that is part of the development project funded through the development. But it is a interlocal agreement between the city and Northern Kentucky Water District. But those costs will be passed through to the developer. And, and the point being that that project was bid out and it came back just under the engineer cost estimates, which is, which is good news for the developer.
Rob, what's, what's the location?
It'll run in off of, does it come through Pearson? I'm looking at Rob again. He was involved. Down Pearson and all the way back on, on the part of Cochran that runs into Alexander Circle outside the outfield fence and, and enter into the project that way. Yeah. So that's good news. And that, there has not been a pre-construction meeting, but it's intended to be. Project was already let out by them. So it's, I keep looking at Rob. Is it an end of year, basically, timeframe?
They hope to get it back by the end.
Which is, which is really good for our park usage, obviously, to have it done through the winter months. Just a couple of other things. The employee health insurance, I wrote in here and we had discussed in the finance committee, kind of a direction that we were looking at. We've incurred and I outlined some of the expense that we've incurred and we've talked about even in our, our meeting before this meeting regarding costs associated with healthcare, employee healthcare coverage. You know, we've experienced significant, significant increases over the last five years. We've pared down the plan over the last five years. We have copay from our employees over the last five years. We've had to change carriers to maintain costs for three different carriers in four years. So we've, we've run out of a lot of our options and we've looked at self-funding as an option. We've done a lot of research. Joe and I have attended a number of conferences on the topic. We've done interviews with other communities. Most of our neighboring communities are doing self-funding. And we feel pretty comfortable that that's our best option moving forward. So we are looking at getting involved with a professional contract. So that's what we're working toward right now. We do have employee work groups through the union representation and we will be convening that group as well. We've had preliminary conversations with them and really made promise to them that we would look at every possibility as well because they're feeling the effects of cutting the plan and having to move carriers every year, that we would explore every option. And this is a departure in, in a pretty large sense to where we've been from fully funded. But we're getting more and more comfortable with the idea of, of the cost savings that that could generate. And longer term, looking at, you know, bringing this thing into something that's a little more manageable in our budget. We have some examples of neighboring communities that have done very well in the self-funded. It always depends on your group and the usage, but at least you have some control over how your costs are, and your expenditures are being generated. So that's just an update. That's where we're at. We'll be meeting with our employee groups and we'll report to council where we end up with that.
So Ron, is this a true self-funding model or is there an opportunity or can some liabilities and terms to?
There's still stopgap coverages that are associated with that, that, that are part of what is purchased and, and goes into your costs. Yeah.
Was it, I don't know, it's early on, savings-wise, do you guess a percent? Do you say that?
I wish I could. But in the first plan year, there'll be a significant change in the budget because they won't be paying for past coverage. So in the first year, you're going to have to really see it over a period of time to see that. But we're pretty confident in where we've been, that we can control costs enough that it'll certainly be beneficial. But we'll, you know, we'll, we'll look at it. I, I would say we'd have to have at least a two or three-year cycle to have any significant findings in that regard.
So there's a different company, a different policy that the city would have. We'd be on the hook for up to a certain number of somebody's loss.
Right.
And then another carrier steps in.
Mm-hmm. Right. And that's, that's how all those function. So essentially, you're, you look at your group, you look at your, your potential loss, and then you insure against that loss. And that's part of what your consulting team provides for you.
So the city would then, well, the consulting team would then, as far as administration of claims, it's not going to be like city staff that's going through medical plans or is outside the contractor?
That's the service that they, yes.
Wow.
Interesting. Yep. And, and if you really, without getting into all the boring details, but we could certainly have a longer discussion about it. But when you really look at the system as it currently exists with fully funded, there's really nobody trying to save costs.
Right.
And there's no way to find information about your group because of the protections under federal law. So when you self-administer, you have access to data of your usage. And so you can adjust your plan to, you know, to alleviate some of those misuses or uses within, and you can share it with your employee groups. And they have a vested interest as well in the cost savings. And now they can participate in that. Because if you have high-end uses and you're addressing them and, and we're never aware of those things as an employer, and they aren't necessarily as a group, individually they may be, but not as a group, but you can share that information and, and make a concerted effort to control costs. So there's a number of factors that lend to the savings in that through, through that self-administration. Okay. Well, I'm sorry. I'm a little withered. Go ahead. Okay. The only other thing I had to report on, just a couple of update items. Pentland Place, the water main is complete. The, if you recall, that was a Northern Kentucky Water District contractor that was assigned to our contractor. They're just a little bit behind schedule. They are at the point where they're taking the road out. If you've been by there, they're doing removal and, and reinstallation of the road as weather permits. So they weren't there today, but they are maybe a couple of weeks out from the anticipated end of September completion. Obviously, weather dependent. They will hit a target sometime in the middle of October. Burnett Ridge, and I had pictures, if you want to throw those up. The Burnett Ridge project is finally completed. Speaking of which, so we have a couple of pictures we can share. Obviously, that was largely weather dependent. And if you look at, you know, that, that entire stream or creek line ran through there. So we had certainly enough wet weather conditions to inhibit that. They had to pull all that dirt out, dry it out before they could compact it back in. So that project was extended for, for a longer period of time. The good news is it's completed. And as you can see, it, it looks very nice in terms of the finished product. When we were down there, we did identify, if you recall, there's a stone culvert that was built and bridged. So that project is complete. And then the last update I had on the crosswalks, we have had conversation, in fact, I have a meeting with the school district tomorrow with their folks to look at specific locations at the middle school, high school, and then we'll be scheduling with St. Thomas to look at their location. And we're looking at doing some extended bump outs to be associated with the actual crosswalk signage. We've made contact with the highway department on permits. We did get authorization from them to use our crews for installation, which is good and a cost savings for us, significant, because otherwise you're pre-qualified, and there's minimal numbers, and you're paying a different rate. So we'll be doing our own installations, we'll be making those applications complete hopefully this week. And I think that's all I had.
Ron, I'm sorry, could you expand or explain a little about the interlocal agreement for expanded jurisdiction for building inspection with the county and what that, what the implications?
Good thing you brought that up, Ken. That's the next thing on business.
Is it?
Yes, new business. Consideration of the interlocal agreement. This is exciting, actually. This is a neat thing.
What it is, we have an interlocal agreement in front of you this evening regarding expanded jurisdiction. So kind of the 101 lesson on Kentucky building code, and it's actually been my background for a number of years, but, and I've served in state roles with the Department of Housing, Building and Construction in the past, but essentially after Beverly Hill Supper Club, there was a mandated Department of Housing, Building and Construction department that was formed in the early 80s. And that program involved requiring local inspection of all structures, and most jurisdictions extended that to single-family in the state, but not every location in the state. Obviously, your urban areas have adopted that. Obviously, the city of Fort Thomas has been involved with local inspections for predating that time, but it's a uniform building code, and it has uniform regulation throughout the entire Commonwealth. The distinction being, and it's always been that way, of certain buildings of a certain size, depending on the use or the occupancy number for the use. So for example, if it's a church under a congregation or a seating capacity of 400, then it's local jurisdiction. If it's over, it's state jurisdiction. All educational facilities are state jurisdiction. All hospitals, childcare are state jurisdiction. Residential multifamily of over 20,000 square feet is state jurisdiction. I hope nobody's taking this, but those are all good numbers, I think. But don't quote me on those. Occupancies over 100 typically for a business use would be state jurisdiction. And local jurisdiction, obviously, is everything below that. That's the program that we've administered over the years and obviously since the adoption in 1980 with Department of Housing, Building and Construction. Through the years, they have also granted what's called expanded jurisdiction, meaning that if you have local qualified individuals, you can take on expanded jurisdiction and do the state projects, with the exception of educational facilities, nursing facilities, and I think there's one other category that's still maintained by the state, but you could do all other local projects or all other projects locally with your staff. We have had qualified individuals. I was in that role and was qualified to do those. However, most times with smaller departments, you choose not to do that simply because of your staffing. And the level of expertise of doing those types of buildings, you're kind of relearning that as a local inspector because you don't see that many of them, depending on the type of community you're in. So the long story short on that is, we've never done expanded jurisdiction in Fort Thomas. And we have been approached by the county through the fiscal court for their inspection department to pick up basically the state jurisdiction for projects within the city of Fort Thomas. They have done this in other communities. They do it for the city of Wilder, for example, is their most recent addition. And what the advantage to that is, first of all, it doesn't change anything with our jurisdiction. It doesn't change anything with collection of fees or other factors involved with our local inspection program. It doesn't, it doesn't change or inhibit our ISO ratings for our building department that sets our insurance rates. So there's really no negative impact to making the change. The advantages are that the county has inspectors that do that, those types of projects in other communities. They're versed in that. They do that as part of their everyday service, and they are local. The State Department had an inspector, Bill Lamotta, who retired last October, had been on the job for over 25 years doing inspections in Northern Kentucky. But they have since had two different inspectors in Northern Kentucky, and the, you know, the level of service has been compromised. Those individuals have multiple county jurisdictions, and they're required to, you know, hit all the bases in all those different counties for all those different jurisdictions for state projects. Some of them have up to 10 counties that they cover. So clearly, you can get a better service product with a local agency. They're certainly qualified. So it's really kind of a neutral issue for us, other than we do feel that the projects within our community at the state level, if you will, will get better service having it go through the county agency. So our recommendation is to approve the interlocal agreement. Don't know if that answered all the questions, or if anybody had any other questions about that topic.
I'm in no effect on what our building department does currently with all the residential.
None whatsoever. The other advantage, I might point that out, is there is a caveat in that agreement that also allows us to, and you saw the exhibitor attachments, which would be their fee schedule, our fee schedule. If we had an occasion, and we are small departments, so for example, if Kevin wasn't available or that position was open for any period of time, it does allow us to automatically use their resources, and they would just collect the fees for any period of time if we ever had a need or a gap in our service, which is also nice. But it does not change who we are, how we operate our building department.
I think it's a great idea. Bill Lamotta was a great guy, and he did a lot of work, and yeah, after he retired, it kind of became difficult. It became very difficult.
And, you know, quite frankly, if you think about the Department of Housing, Building and Construction, they take the entire state, and they have, sometimes they have over a 30-day, 30, 40-day turnover just for plan reviews. So if your project's ready and you're waiting for over a month just to get a plan review, and then you still have to go through a process of corrections and amendments and...
It takes a long time.
Yeah, it takes a long time. Having local, a closer local control is certainly beneficial to those projects, so.
How many cities, council?
Not certain of that, but I know they have several of them that they're working with. They've had Cold Spring and I believe Alexandria and Wilder, I think there were three that they worked with more. And they do some local inspection for that as well, for some of those cities.
Any other questions or comments about that? We will, that'll come up under resolution later in the agenda, if anybody's got any other questions. One other piece of business that's not really new business, kind of old business, but I wanted to share it while you all were here. Veterans Day, we're going to have a special event up at the Charters of Freedom in Tower Park on November 10th, and we dedicated Charters Freedom last year, but there's a bronze plaque that's going to be dedicated this year for all the folks who donated to the project. So if anybody else would like to donate to the Charters of Freedom and get your name on the plaque, the deadline, I think, is October 10th to give us time to get the plaque together. And I believe if you donate $1,000 and above, then you can add something to the time capsule which will, is built into and part of the Charters of Freedom, so. And maybe Robin will do a great story about that on Fort Thomas Matters, so more people hear about it. Yeah, that sounds great.
And Mayor, I don't know that we'll get it in before this event, but there is considerable landscaping as part of that project, is the only part that's unfinished at this point.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, and this weekend with the, with Merg's Music, you get up there and walk around and go, "Man, it'd be cool, I'd like to have my name on there."
It's actually on Saturday.
It's actually on Saturday. At noon?
Yes.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, because it's, it's, right, right, yes. All right, now we are to Finance Committee Report on Disbursements.
Report of disbursements, September 4th, 2018 through September 13th, 2018. General fund, $59,074.69. Public Works KDOT fund, $62,812.34. CBD revitalization, $34,688.58. Waste fees, $90,365.69. Total, $246,941.30. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee, recommend that warrants numbered 4418 through 4506 be approved, and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Peterman, chairperson, Ms. Kelly, member, Mr. Beasley, member.
If motion received. All right. There's a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Flatter?
Aye.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, we're down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. We have ordinance O24-2018, which is the tax rate ordinance.
This is a summary of ordinance O24-2018, an ordinance providing for the imposition, levy, collection, and apportionment of the taxes of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky for the year 2018 and fixing the tax rate. For 2018, there is an imposed as taxes of the city, the sum of .390 upon each $100 valuation of real property, .390 upon each $100 valuation of personal property and mixed property, .3971 upon each $100 valuation of motor vehicles subject to taxation within the city limits, and .390 upon each $100 valuation of all franchise valuations to be used for defraying the current and incidental expenses of city government. The taxes shall be due and payable on the day the ordinance becomes effective. All bills not paid or postmarked by October 31st, 2018 shall be delinquent, and as a penalty of 5% of the amount of the total bill shall be added. The city treasurer shall collect the bills with said 5% penalty added and interest at a rate of 8% per annum until paid on the amount of the tax and waste fee. The city clerk shall add an additional penalty of 10% of the amount of the unpaid total bill and to collect the bills with a total penalty of 15% and interest from November 1st, 2018. In the event that a delinquent tax bill is referred to the city attorney for collection, legal action will be initiated to collect the delinquent tax interest penalty levied thereof and the costs and fees associated. The city of Fort Thomas has a lien upon the property assessed for the tax and waste fees and all penalties, interest, fees, commission, charges, and other expenses including court costs and attorney fees. The city intended to have its public hearing on the tax rate on September 4th, 2018, and a first reading of the ordinance establishing the tax rate on September 4th, 2018, and a second reading on September 17th, 2018. The city mails its real estate tax bill no later than the end of September each year since the due date of the city tax bill is October 31st. The city requested the notices of publication to be printed on August 16th and August 23rd in the Campbell County Reporter. However, Gannett published them in the Cincinnati Enquirer. As a result, the city had to advertise in the Campbell County Reporter on August 30th and September 6th and postpone the public hearing until September 17th. In order to mail the city tax bills in a timely manner, this ordinance shall be read on September 17th, 2018. For the reasons set forth above, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and the provisions of this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by a vote of two-thirds or more of the legislative body. The requirements of a second reading are suspended due to emergency.
All right, thank you very much. Is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Flatter?
All right, thank you. Executive Order EO14-2018.
An executive order appointing Michael Wright as a probationary firefighter, paramedic, grade 3B for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky Fire Department and fixing his compensation for the fiscal year.
All right, requires no action. We have a resolution, RO7-2018.
Resolution, RO7-2018, a resolution of the city of Fort Thomas authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Campbell County Fiscal Court for building inspection and plan review services.
Does that need action?
Yes.
Yes. Do you entertain a motion for that, or is this a fishery, or is this?
No, it would be one, just one.
One action, okay. Do you entertain a motion? Is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Flatter?
Aye.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? All right, the meeting is adjourned.